Back on the record, we did consider recommending artists for the public art installation at the new Brisbane Library.
So, as the staff report said, the city council back in October adopted, October 2014, adopted a public art ordinance, a half a percent of building development for public projects would go to public art. We're anticipating a cost of about $6 million for the library, so this, about $30,000 would be set aside for public art. When we brought this back to the city council in November, brought it to the ad hoc committee in November of 2016, the ad hoc committee, as you might remember, is two council members and three members of the Parks and Recreation Commission. They thought a range of $30,000 to $50,000 would be better. I brought this back to the city council on December 8th, and the city council agreed that a range of $30,000 to $50,000 for a public art piece at the library was doable. The extra $20,000 would come from the public art fund. We have about $180,000 in the public art fund as of today. We've sent out RFPs. We got about 25 responses from all over the country, which I thought was very good. We had a number of really great proposals. The subcommittee, the ad hoc committee reduced, identified four different artists that they talked to on April 26th. Three of them showed, came in person, one of them was a phone call. So the four artists, one was from Massachusetts, one was from Texas, and two were from San Francisco. Or one from Berkeley and one from San Francisco, if I think I got that correctly. After reviewing the proposals, the ad hoc subcommittee is recommending Michelle Gutlove. Michelle is out of Massachusetts. She does some really phenomenal things with glass and light, and that was very intriguing to the committee. It's going to be a very signature piece. As I say in the staff report, Michelle has done artwork all over the country, including Alaska. She also has an installation that she is putting together for Reykjavik in Iceland. So not only is she known in our country, but she's an international artist who works with light and art and glass to create really exciting images. And we have a video of her work, which I think would be really appropriate to show at this point.
Okay.
One of the things to note is how the light reflects off of the glass, and that's part of the overall image that the subcommittee wanted, was to create a sense of being surrounded by the art, not just having it on display.
Oh, also, these were the brain cells?
Mm-hmm, communicating to each other.
That were communicating, yeah.
And the light changes throughout the day?
So, a few things to note on, as you watch the video. So, one of the things that Michelle is very talented at is being able to use both natural light and also artificial light. So, the one that's in Kodiak, Alaska, so what she's able to do is she's able to track where the sun goes on a daily basis. Because everybody, you know, it's a very known thing of where the sun will be at every moment of the day and whichever location you're at. So what she did when she was doing the one in Kodiak, Alaska, she created the artwork specifically to pick up the June 21st light coming through the window. Because on that, on that day, the light will hit it in such a way that will create a different type of art piece than it does on a regular day. On the regular days, you know, especially when you're in Alaska and you have so much downtime from sunlight, so much darkness, that, you know, the artificial light create, and you can see it on this picture here, creates some kind of an image, but, you know, on the June 21st, it creates, you know, first day of summer, it creates a different image on the walls. And that's really what she's working through on a lot of the, on a lot of her things, is to say, okay, where is the light going to be coming from the window? What do I want it to look like in, at that time of day? And then what do I want it to look like at different times of day? And then she puts together a lighting plan with the architect to create a different image for different times of the day. And that's one of, you know, she's already started, you know, based on the ad hoc subcommittee recommendation and the Parks and Recreation Commission's recommendation to you. I asked her if she can get in touch with the architect, because we don't want to slow down the process of the library, and she's already been talking to the architect about, you know, what does, what she needs to have done in order for her to be able to, you know, to what kinds of images, what kind of drawing she needs in order to really understand how the light is going to be impacting the library. So that's, you know, it's very exciting to have somebody of her talent and her reputation on our very first time out. You know, so it was, I think, the, you know, not that I can speak for the ad hoc committee, but, you know, they were very excited just about the, all of the, all the different types of art that we got to, to look at. And, you know, there was a variety of art. There were a number of known, well-known artists in the Bay Area who proposed, who proposed. There were some very good up-and-coming artists who, you know, we want to keep our eye on for our future projects. But for, to create that signature piece on our first one, the ad hoc committee and the Parks and Recreation Commission really think that Michelle is going to really bring that wow factor into all of this. And Michelle does this, a lot of it is out of the love of creation. And that's, you know, that really came through in the interview, that, you know, the create, creating the art piece, making it unique, making it special for the community was really important. And one of the things that she did for us was she left us a piece of her, of one of her other pieces of an installation from another place, which is a bird. And what we're thinking about for this one is having some kind of butterflies be in that luminescence kind of glass, and then potentially interspersing it with regular glass as some of, some flowers, to get that sense more of that, what we like in our community, that, you know, the mountain preserving, the butterflies preserving the flowers, like the lupin. She does not, you know, she is much more into, not as much into representational art as she, as you can tell by a lot of what she's done, as more-
Abstract.
-abstract art. Thank you.
Yeah, when you look at the Kodiak piece, I mean, I mean, all of them are excellent, but there are much better pieces, or the abstract ones, you know, where it's just like, you know, really letting that artist-
Right.
-you know, just use her creativity to, to really enhance the, the, the living space.
Right. I mean, what, you know, what you do is you get the sense of what it is. I mean, you can tell looking at the Kodiak piece that, you know, it's fish. And she could tell you what type of fish it is. I cannot, but it's an abstraction of that fish. I mean, we talked about doing, you know, abstractions of the butterflies that we find on the mountain. So you're not going to see, you know, the mission, you know, you're not going to be able to say, oh, that's a Mission Blue, but it will be an abstraction of a Mission Blue. It won't be a lupin, but it will be an abstraction of lupin. So it really creates that overall sense. And I, you know, as I said, I think one of the things that the ad hoc committee was really looking for was that when you walk into the library, that you're not just looking at a piece of art on the wall, but that the art surrounds you and it becomes part of the library. And that's one of the things that, you know, she's able to do is, by the way she angles her pieces, by the way she places her pieces, is she's able to create, you know, art on the wall, art on the floor, art on the ceiling. And so that way, when you walk through a building, you get that sense that you're coming into a, a piece of art, and you're part of that piece of art, not just an observation of art.
Right.
Can I add on to that?
Yep.
Stuart, what a good job in summarizing all that. That was great. Another thing she said was that even, like, what we had envisioned is how the entryway is so open, it'd be cool to have, you know, like butterflies flying throughout, so when you walk in, you are almost like taken, you want to follow them, you know, in, into the library. And so she even said she could do, like, little clusters, like, once you get in further, deeper into the library, all of a sudden, you discover some over in, like, a corner over here, a little cluster of butterflies over here, a little cluster over there. So I thought that that was really cool, because, you know, she could just take a couple of those glass pieces and just kind of hang them in a corner so that it, the art is spread completely throughout, which was really exciting that she was open to doing that. And one other thing that I think is really important to note is not only does she work a lot with the natural light, and Stuart kind of touched on the artificial light too, but if you look at the one in El Paso on the top, you can see that she has put tracklights in, and that's where she really works closely with the architect. And she has these specially designed, they're not like tracklights that you just go out and buy and put there. She has them specifically designed with a certain type of light, whatever, to do this. And so she, and she figures out exactly where they need to go so that at certain times of the day, when you're not going to have a lot of natural light, that you're still getting a lot of this effect. So it's cool, is throughout the day, the colors that you're seeing, the shapes that you're seeing are going to be a little bit different. And we just felt like she was kind of the perfect artist for this project, because the library was built with such attention to natural light and kind of bringing the outdoors inside. So that's why we were really drawn to her.
Yeah.
Is there anything else? We said a lot of this before, but-
I think you've all, each of you have summarized it really well. I guess what I would add is that we feel that she, her approach really complements the architects, which has, you know, so far, the preliminary design chose to have that, that spine of the library be really open and airy with skylights. So it's, and it's going to be transformative and, and integrated, I think is what we were trying to do. And this is pretty much what we had envisioned, and then she came to us with her proposal, and it was, it was pretty much spot on. And she also talked about not only putting, like, pieces, you know, in certain parts, maybe as offshoots to the main piece, but to also have a couple of the, of the glass pieces that she can provide to the library so that the children and other patrons there can really get their hands on them and see what they are, look and feel like. So it'll be like an educational experience that's very interactive for, especially for the children. So I'm really excited about it. And we do have the sample piece that went around. It's really, it's hard to see in the light. It's best when you see it in the dark. And so it's something that not, not only will people enjoy during the day, but even when it's nighttime and the library, you know, may already be closed, as people walk down visitation, you know, we envision that there would be some lighting that you'd be able to see it from the street.
She even mentioned, like, putting some outside. We were kind of surprised that, I mean, her mind is really open. She said, we could, I could even put some outside of the building, and we were asking her, well, what about wind? She goes, no, I can secure them. We could even have them coming from outside, going inside. We could put them in the floor.
Right.
Who's, we could pour the concrete and stick them in there that way. So she, she seems like a great artist to work with.
Yeah.
Because you can tell she's really eager to please, and she is super flexible, which I think is something that you want in an artist, somebody who can hear your vision and be willing to kind of manipulate what they had come up with so that it better suits what you had in mind.
Right. And, and she's also really experienced, you know, she's done this for many years. And so I, I'm, and she actually makes all the pieces herself by hand. She doesn't contract out. She makes them.
Which we did find from some other artists, that they did contract out some of their work.
So, you know, she, she personally, you know, has, has relationships with the suppliers for the materials, and I think she said she has them shipped to Southern California and then can have them-
Right, for the coating.
Right, for the coating, and then can have them shipped up by truck.
Okay, I'm sold. Good, good job.
It'll be great.
So, the only thing to note is, you know, we do have a budget of $50,000, as you can tell by listening to the two council members and myself, that, you know, this is, this is a piece that might expand a little bit. If it costs more, you know, she does live in Massachusetts, so if we need to fly her out to do some work with, you know, to hear the community or to have additional conversations, or if what we find is that, you know, in order to get just the look we want, it may cost a little bit more. If it does cost more than $50,000, of course, I'd bring that back to the city council for additional approval. But we do have enough funds in the public art fund, so it would not be an impact on the city's general fund. So, you know, this is, I think, is a signature piece. This is our first one out the gate, you know, making it, and I'm trying to sell you just a little bit more, Clark. I don't know when to stop selling.
Okay.
No.
Stop.
Okay.
So, do we have a recommendation?
Yeah, I mean, I know.
Yeah, no, she, she's brilliant.
I mean, her last name should be my last name. Gutlove.
Yeah, no, I think she's great.
That's a unique name.
Yeah, just like how both of you are very excited about what she might create for the library, I'm, I'm super excited too. And, yeah, I mean, she's, she's got so much imagination that, yeah, I mean, I, I just, yeah, I mean, I'd love to see what she comes up with and, you know, and I like how you guys are trying to, to, to connect with what's going on here in Brisbane, like, with the mountain and the natural setting. I mean, that, that is part of what we identify as, as being citizens of Brisbane, and so, but going for that abstract look as well, not, not, not like the Alaska rendition, but more like some of the other ones that she has done. I, I think, then that makes it more fanciful. So, thanks.
Okay. Terry, did you have anything to add?
Well, I've always loved glass and the reflection, and, so, I, I think that all her pieces are, are beautiful and are probably better experienced in person than in the video, or, and I, I think that it's a really good choice. I look forward to seeing it without flashing lights.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. So do we need to formally make a recommendation? And I see a hand raised. Would someone from the comment, from the public like to make a comment?
So, um, this is a really wonderful project. It's really beautiful. But, you know, environmentalists sometimes rain on people's parades. It's because we want other things to grow. Rain, grow, whatever. Um, I just want you to think for, I'm not trying to cut a, put a kibosh on this, but I just want to think for a moment about the fact that this installation, unlike most art, which is sort of static, it's dynamic, that's a great thing, but it's going to have an energy footprint in perpetuity with the electricity, and I assume LED lighting.
Yes.
But I just want to put that into the equation, make sure it doesn't get overlooked, because sometimes those things do, those things frequently get overlooked. Um, I don't remember, is there solar panels on the library, or is it just solar-ready?
I think it's solar-ready.
It's solar-ready, but not, does not have solar.
Well, I mean, the city has purchased 100% renewable energy.
Okay, so that will cover this building through the PCE?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that's a good start. But, you know. Eh, all right, that's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Did we make, to make a formal recommendation?
You didn't.
No, no motion?
No, no, not yet.
We do need to make a motion.
Well, yeah, it'd be preferable.
Okay. All right, is there a motion?
So why not, I, I think the, the council members around that committee should make the motion.
Okay. I'll make a motion to recommend Michelle Gutlove as art artist for the public art installation at the new Brisbane Library.
I will second that.
Okay, and that's to work with staff, right, and you guys, huh? Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Okay, moving on to staff report. Item A, city manager's report on upcoming activities.
No items, I've got a few comments on the schedule when we get to that.
Mayor Council Matters, receive information report concerning sanctuary city policies.
Madam Mayor and Council, this is an information report in response to a, a request from a resident that was sent to the mayor concerning whether or not the city of Brisbane would want to consider adopting a policy that would go along the lines of a, of a sanctuary city. As, as the council is probably well aware, many jurisdictions throughout California have adopted sanctuary city policies, some very broad in scope, such as San Francisco and, and the county of Santa Clara, and some along the lines of some cities in San Mateo County, where the policy has simply been that the community is all, to, to all, all people. So we've kind of laid out sort of the, you know, the extremes here in terms of what those policies could be, and the idea was to see whether or not the council was interested in having staff bring back more particular options with respect to this, or whether there was any interest on the council for, for us to pursue it. So with that in mind, the police chief is here to answer any questions concerning whether or not adoption of some kind of sanctuary policy would have an impact on policing efforts in Brisbane, and she and I are here to answer any questions on that, on, on this issue.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, I, when I read, when I first read this, that's what I was more curious about is how the chief of police felt about this, you know, from-
Thank you. Just, we, be, whether or not we're a sanctuary city doesn't, doesn't affect how we enforce. I mean, we, it is our policy, we don't inquire on someone's immigration status, so that really is not, doesn't take, come into play. One of the things that Michael had, and I had discussed is, you know, Homeland Security falls under, which came into place after 9/11, and they actually absorbed the INS, which was INS, the Immigration Naturalization Services. So there's two components. There's the investigative arm of the Department of Homeland Security and the enforcement of immigration arm. If there was any, any need for investigative purposes, we would, we would reach out to the investigative arm, but we've never, in my tenure here, have ever had to do that. So I really don't believe it would affect the way we currently do business.
Okay. I think this is just more of a ceremonial-type statement towards the current administration in Washington DC.
And I received a request from a resident, but also from other groups that have been looking at this in other cities. I've been asked to, for our city to look at it. So I think, you know, even though it may not affect our practices, I think it's good to consider having a policy like that, just to send the message that we are an inclusive community.
Yeah. Yeah, if I may, Madam Mayor, you know, on page two of the staff report, the paragraph right above fiscal impact, you know, it states that "The department will continue to enforce criminal laws, but it is, but it has not been, nor is the policy of the department, to inquire about, investigate, or report to any federal immigration agency an individual's immigration status." And I just want to applaud you for that leadership, Lisa. You know, your focus has always been on enforcing criminal law and, and protecting the city and keeping us safe, not, you know, not, you know, concerned about the immigration status of, of an individual that might be working here, or living here, or socializing here. I, I believe that, that when law enforcement starts to involve themselves in that type of responsibility, it makes the overall community less safe, because then folks are not reporting crimes that really protect all of us, because they're concerned about perhaps being deported. And, you know, and also saves lives too, because of that. So, you know, there's a, there's a, called, uh, resolution from the city of Belmont, and I don't know if any of the council members have read any of these, but, you know, that, the city of Belmont did it, did it right. And I would like our council to basically take this Belmont resolution and make it, make it a Brisbane resolution, and that we do take a stand that, you know, we, our city, this, does take a stand on bullying and, and being respectful of, of different, you know, different ethnicities and, you know, gender identification and, and all those, you know, types of things that are, I think, important for liberal democracy.
Okay. Terry?
Um, I think it's a, it is a good idea to have a sanctuary city policy, and I, I agree with that. I would hope that we can copy another city's resolution, so we're not investing a lot of legal time. I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel, and I know state of California is looking at becoming a sanctuary state. And so again, sort of like we did with the plastic bag ban, where we copied another ordinance, and to the extent that I don't see any flaws in the Belmont one, I'm not sure we need to have as much as they have in there. But again, without going to great legal expense- to great legal expense, I think it would be fine to do.
Okay.
Yep.
Addison?
Um, well, I disagree. I, I feel that if it's really not going to change anything, I don't really see the purpose, to be honest. And I kind of want to stay out of all of this. Just like what's happening in our country. I feel like people are just ripping each other apart and I personally just don't even want to be in the middle of, of any of that. I think this is controversial depending on, you know, what side of the issue that you're on. And it would be one thing if it would actually change something, if it would actually provide some sort of sanctuary and we were actually doing something, but it's not changing anything. So obviously I'm outnumbered and that's totally okay. It's not something that, you know, I would throw, throw myself on a sword over. I absolutely believe that we should be inclusive of everyone. I just don't see the purpose behind something that's not actually going to do. I mean, I, I, I want to do something because it's, I want to pass things like this because they're actually doing something. They're actually changing something. That's the purpose of what we do here. And I just don't see it because of what, you know, Lisa has told us and what I've read in this report, that this isn't really going to create any differences within the way that we run our city.
It's ceremonial.
Right. And I know that.
You know, I don't, I don't think it's ceremonial. I think what you do is that when you, when you make a statement and others then make that statement, that's what creates policy. And so us taking a stand as a local entity, you know, banding with other local entities then provides, uh, you know, the, the platform for which I think federal, uh, requirements can be changed. If, if cities don't do it, then, then folks like Trump can, can continue to, to do what they do. So I, I, I hope that, that we move forward with this.
So, and I'm not saying that I'm entirely against it. I mean, I, I thought the purpose of the discussion tonight was just to see if there was a desire from the council to look into this, not to pass it. So I'd really like to hear from, have a public hearing on it where members of our community can talk about it because I think for me, that always has been and always will be what guides my decision-making. And because this is a controversial issue, people have different opinions on it, I think that it's important for us to have that time where people can come and express how they feel. And based on that feedback, then I would feel comfortable to make a recommendation or to not because, I mean, I always make decisions based on the feedback that I'm getting from the community and I just don't feel like we've had that, that time.
Sure. And your points were all taken.
And that's really where I'm coming from mostly. I just, I, I don't want to rush into something because we all personally feel really excited about it without kind of giving the public a chance to just either be excited with you or to maybe express a difference of opinion.
Okay. Well, I, I understand that this would come back before the council, so there would be that opportunity.
Great.
And for you to hear more public input.
Yeah. Okay.
So, go ahead.
I, I just was going to echo, I think that, um, Madison's point was really well stated about creating legislation that makes a difference in, in how we act. And I think that that was a really good point about it. And my concern always is, you know, unneeded regulations. Sometimes we see us going, what I see going through and, and so that was my point on the, the cost, um, you know, the legal fees and the costs and unnecessary regulations if we have no need for it. So I think her point was very well taken and, you know, it deserves further looking into.
Thank you.
Okay. So at this point, do we need to make a vote on it?
No, I, I'm, I'm hearing direction to bring back, uh, a couple of options sort of along the, the Belmont option. And then I could also prepare, uh, without going a lot of trouble, more of a, of a city of San Francisco kind of more broad sanctuary policy. And that way the council would sort of have the option of doing nothing, sort of taking the middle ground or taking, uh, a stronger ground.
Okay.
And again, it's not, I mean, I can get, you know, word documents on that without too much trouble and, and tweak them and it won't take a whole lot of time to do that.
Okay.
So, so the way that Belmont, um, characterizes it is a resolution of the city council of the city of Belmont affirming the city's commitment to safeguard the civil rights, safety and dignity of all community members. So it's not necessarily stated in the title of the resolution. This is a sanctuary city resolution. It's just kind of lumped because sanctuary cities pass similar sorts of, um, legislation that, or policies that have these same sort of characteristics. And so you call them sanctuary city policies, I guess, but theirs isn't necessarily like, this is our sanctuary city. They don't title it that, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I would, I mean, it, it's really sort of a middle ground. It's certainly not, I wouldn't characterize that resolution as the city adopting a sanctuary city policy. It's more of a, uh, all-inclusive kind of policy. And if the council is more comfortable with that rather than the, you know, adopting a, a true sanctuary city policy, that would be an option the council could look at.
And that's why I mentioned the Belmont one is to me that, that seems more in, in line of, of what we see ourselves as.
And none of the resolutions before us actually mentioned sanctuary city in the title. But I, I agree, I like the wording of the, the Belmont resolution. So I'll look forward to seeing that at a future council meeting. So, um, I think that's enough direction then. Okay, we'll move on. Item C, LAFCO appointment at the May 19th, 2017 city selection committee meeting.
And I'll be attending that tomorrow?
That's right.
And, uh, you're, you're not calling, right?
No, I'll be out of town.
Okay. So I'll be attending that and we only got one item, which is Rich Garberino. And Rich has done a good job, so I can't see us not voting for him.
Yeah, I agree. He's reached out to me, um, to find out which way we're going, but I'd recommend that as well. So any discussion? Nope. So, um, do we need to make a motion? All those in favor of supporting Rich Garberino to the LAFCO board?
We don't, we don't need a motion on it.
No? Okay. All right, so you've got that covered. Thank you for handling that. Okay. Item D, county-wide assignments and subcommittee reports. Has anyone attended any meetings?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Terry?
We had about five of them.
Uh, let's see. Madison and I attended a citizens' airport, um, noise committee, subcommittee meeting where we heard from the community and, and got some talking points as far as how we will be looking at the airport noise. Clark and I had a facilities subcommittee regarding the water rates and sewer rates, garbage rates, um, that we've discussed in our meeting tonight. We had a subcommittee meeting on the water infrastructure, or the, was it water infrastructure?
And soils processing and, uh, the one we passed tonight with, uh, recology and...
Right. We already, we had another one on the water master plan sewer.
That was before.
Was it since we've had our last report out?
Yeah, that was before. That, that one's going to come back to us in September, I think.
Um, and then I attended a, uh, Brisbane Baylands, um, citizens committee meeting last night, last night or the night before, Tuesday night, um, where we had reports from the regional water control board regarding Kinder Morgan and their, um, remediation plan and compliance with the, um, cleanup for their area. We also had a report from the Department of Toxic Substance Control on Schlegel Lock and where they are with their remediation process and the UPC properties in the southern portion of San Francisco and the northern portion of Brisbane and where they are with their remediation, um, on those properties. It was very interesting. Chip Gribble, who is the Department of Toxic Substance Control and is in charge of that remediation process, um, said that they're still doing some investigation on the very, the southern portion of the Schleg property, which is in Brisbane. And one of the interesting things that he said was that they feel that the data from the, um, contaminants report is not fresh and is what he calls stale and would want that looked at before they go further with, um, their final remediation plans.
Okay. Thank you for attending that meeting. Okay. Cliff?
Yeah. So I attended a CCAG meeting, um, last week. Yeah, there, there wasn't a lot to report on except for, um, some of the things that are happening in Sacramento in regards to, um, transportation funding and, um, how the, that recent bill that was passed and how different cities can expect to receive some of that money. Also some of the legislation that's being floated around in regards to housing and transportation, um, which, um, you know, should all be concerned about is, you know, in regards to how they may affect, uh, local land use, uh, control. Uh, we had a Hartboard, um, event, uh, trying to raise, uh, money for teacher housing and it was very successful. I also went to the HIP Housing, uh, luncheon. Prior to the meeting, I had a, a, a meeting or prior to the event, I had a meeting with, um, Assembly Member Kevin Mullen, um, wanted to just get his, um, take on what's happening in, in Sacramento and, um, in, you know, his assurances of, of supporting Brisbane and he's very supportive of Martin Rossness with the Baylands. Uh, he has said that he, uh, is going to try and attend the speaker workshop and hopefully he will talk, um, at the, um, at the speaker workshop that I know now we've, we've changed the date, but, um, it was good for him to, um, say that he, he does support what we're trying to do. And then, uh, you know, we had the office hours last, I guess it was the week before. And so, um, you know, I'd like to just put it out there that I'll have office hours again on Wednesday at, at six o'clock.
How has that been going? Have you been getting a lot of people?
No. No, we didn't do...
Got to give them coffee.
We, we didn't do, I guess, you know, a, a very robust outreach. So, uh, I talked it over with Clay and we're going to have something on the signboard and, and do some postings. But it was a very, um, I, I, whenever you, you have an opportunity to speak with anybody, it's always constructive and so, um, you know, you, you come away with, with, you know, just always different ways of, of, of looking at it. So, yeah.
That's great. Okay. Clark?
Cliff and I had a, um, well, Terry and I had that whole slew of meetings together. And then Cliff and I had a Bayland subcommittee meeting and we discussed with Andrea, oh, what's her table, is it? Uh, yeah. About the speaker series and kind of lined that up and, uh, turns out that we can't get anybody on Saturday. So that has to be modified and we'll talk about that on the next schedule here.
Terry covered the one that, that I was at with the, um, airport noise. There is, before I forget, there is one coming up with emergency services, right? And I'm not going to be around. Are you not going to be around either, Clay? Do we have to have somebody else go?
That was last night.
Okay. Well, I guess you figured it out.
It's, it's okay. It, they, they passed the budget and it was pretty much a status quo, uh, budget from last year. So, um, it was, I, I participated in the, in the management committee. We had our, our input that way.
Okay. Well, there was the update on that.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I don't have any, um, other updates other than what I gave earlier except that, um, I did, um, give an interview with Peninsula Television's San Mateo County Today Show. They, uh, have been going around to the different cities in San Mateo County and inviting the mayors to come and speak about their cities. So, uh, that just, um, I just got the link for it today and I'll be sure to share it with Ingrid so she can put it on the website. It was a, it was a nice interview.
How do you access? Is it just all online or through a channel?
Yeah, so you can go to Peninsula TV's website. I don't know the address, but if you just like Google Penn TV, it'll come up and, um, they should have it on their website. All, they have an archive of all the past interviews and you can just click on the link.
Is it entirely, do they only broadcast online or do they actually broadcast on TV?
Oh, I think it's on TV as well. Yeah, it's broadcast live and then archived on their website.
Okay.
And then they probably rerun it, not live, but they, they, they show it on their, on their channel. I think it's whatever the public TV channel is that we have here. Not too many people use, use that. It's all about, you know, the internet now, so.
That's my mom's favorite channel, PBS.
Okay. So yes, you can find it both on TV and on the website. Okay. So moving on to city council meeting schedule.
So you should all have, um, a meeting schedule that in the upper left-hand corner says five eighteen seventeen, today's date. Okay?
Okay.
So the June 10th meeting, which was going to be the speaker series, is now going to be moved to June 15th. June, um, so going back, May 23rd, which is next Tuesday, we will start at six thirty. That will be the presentation by the applicant and the applicant's consultants. We're anticipating that to be in the neighborhood of three hours with questions and answers. And then your, uh, next regular city council meeting is on June 1st. And then we will start to having the community presentations on, uh, June 7th. Again, the speaker series on June 15th. And then, um, on June, um, 19th, um, could potentially be continuation from June 7th or, um, hopefully we'll be able to get to the, uh, the, um, white paper on the processing issues.
Okay.
Processing of the application, I should say.
Okay. Excellent. So the dates are the same except that now we don't have June 10th and it, on June 15th, we're starting at six thirty.
Yeah. Not, not asking for any additional dates at this time. The other item is that, um, the mayor has informed me that she's not available on August 3rd. And normally we try to do like one meeting in July and one meeting in August, so we could go with July 20th and August 17th for our regular council meetings.
August 3rd is a scratch then.
Yeah.
So we're just taking the August 3rd date off because Lori's not available?
Correct.
Well, I think we normally take, um, you know, we have a shortened schedule usually in July or August, so that would be the time for people who are on summer vacation schedules.
And, and as always, if there's, uh, dates that, um, don't work for you, just let me know, um, Ingrid or myself, and we'll try to accommodate that in the scheduling.
Can you remind me again why June 7th is at six?
Um, I think we were just kind of using that as a, um, as opposed to six thirty? I'm not quite sure. I'm not quite sure.
We just wanted as much time as you, as much time for the community presentations.
Yeah, we did, we do have quite a few community presentations, so we're, it's not anything, I think, that you're going to need to be prepared for ahead of time in terms of readings, but we do need probably, you know, I would imagine, four hours that night for the various presentations.
Does that time work for everyone?
A question on that. Since there are so many people that want us present on that night, are you, are you giving them, like, when we had our interviews, it's like from this time to this time, so that we can kind of try and stay on...
We're trying to get a sense from them what their, their time request is.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll, we'll work on that, and if, you know, if it looks like we're not going to be able to get everybody that night, then we'll, we'll come back on your June 1 meeting and, and kind of discuss the schedule.
Also, that way, if people are going to be talking in Hour 3, then they, maybe they know to come then, or if, they don't want them to sit around all night, just like waiting for their turn.
Yeah, we'll, we'll try to lay it out, so that people have a sense of what the...
I'm, I'm sorry, you said that if we didn't get to them all on June 7, we could talk about it on our June 1 meeting.
No, I, I'm sorry. I, I meant to say that if it, if it looks, by June 1, if it looks like we're not going to be able to deal with everybody on June 7, must be getting, getting attacked by mobs here, then, you know, we'll come to you about a potential, another date in addition to June 7. So I, I hope by June 1, we'll have a good sense of whether June 7 is going to be enough for the community presentations.
Okay.
Is BB CAG going to do a presentation, too?
I believe so. I believe they're one of them, aren't they?
BB CAG?
Okay.
BB CAG is not part of the list yet. I'll, I'll reach out to them.
Yeah, they've requested everything, sure.
Okay. Any other questions on the schedule?
Isn't it?
No? Okay. All right. Thank you.
It's just...
Okay.
Really hard to get to those 6 o'clock meetings.
I know. Yeah. For me as well. Okay, so we'll move on to written communications. I have a piece of paper that says "none." We have received the following communications between April 27 and May 18. None. Okay. Non-relate, non-Baylands-related, that is. Okay, we are at oral communications number two. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on a, on an item not on the agenda? No?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Your turn. Thank you all.